I'd like to call the meeting to order today for our board meeting on February 20th, 2018. Good afternoon. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome you to the school board meeting this Tuesday. If you wish to speak during the hearing of citizens, please pick up a card in the back of the room and print your name and topic clearly and return the card to our board assistant Kathy Tompkins. At the appropriate time, I will call you up to speak. Please stand. I think we should start before we have our salute of the flag. I think we should start by having a moment of silence for our friends in Broward County. Thank you. Now we'll have the flag salute by Booker High School color guard under the direction of Colonel Wise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, we have a number of special presentations. And first on our list is the recognition of completion of the STEM Smart and Tech Active Classroom redesign in every middle school funded by the Charles and Marjorie Baransik Foundation and the Gulf Coast Community Foundation, who are present and here with us today. I'd like to invite Karen Rose, Executive Director of Middle Schools, to the podium.
Good afternoon, school board members. Sart Hardee, Dr. Bowden, Superintendent. It's a joy to be here this afternoon for this celebration. Eight years ago, Teri Hansen, Mark Pritchett, Paige Deppman, middle school principals, and our extraordinary middle school teachers and students came together with the support of the school board to unveil the 21st Century Classroom. As a result of the partnership with Gulf Coast Community Foundation and the Charles and Marjorie Baransik Foundation, instruction and learning in every middle school core classroom transformed and will be forever changed. I would like to recognize the Charles and Marjorie Baransik Foundation and ask Chuck, who's with us this afternoon, to please stand so we can recognize him. It's a pleasure to introduce Teri Hansen, if you would please join me, President of the Charles and Marjorie Baransik Foundation, and Mark Pritchett, President of the Gulf Coast Community Foundation. And I believe that Mark will start and share a few pieces. Mark?
Thank you, Karen. I think the reason I'm going first is age before beauty here. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and staff. This has been an incredible partnership between our foundations and the school district. You will not find a school district in the country that looks like our middle school classrooms. It started off with a $2.5 million pledge from Gulf Coast Community Foundation, and then involved to over $18 million in support for these special classrooms and the training of the wonderful teachers. Why middle school? We started with middle school because that's where we were losing students and their interest in science and math. And we thought if we could get them in middle school and keep their interest up and keep their excitement about learning, we would be able to carry that pipeline in a much fuller capacity. So, we asked our administrators, our principals, our students and teachers to rethink everything, think big. And boy, did they think big. They thought really big, much bigger than our foundation could have ever thought. And what makes this interesting is, is not one grant application was completed for this. It was strictly a trust partnership between us and the school district to transform something that's never been done before. So, on behalf of Gulf Coast Community Foundation, we invite any of you to go and look at these middle schools and see these 23-inch touchscreen televisions, these handheld devices, these digital probes, and see if you can remember what it was like when you went to school versus what it is now. And we can't thank our donors enough for contributing to this wonderful effort. If it wasn't for our donors, there's no way we could have scaled this up. And in particular, we'd like to thank Charles and Marjorie Baransik for their unselfish and visionary gift to this effort.
So, thank you, Mark. So, I was at Gulf Coast when STEM Smart started, and the Baransiks were donors of ours. And they were the ones who, after they saw the classroom, the STEM Smart classroom, said, "We will match, dollar for dollar, anything donors do to outfit all of the science and math classrooms in the county." Originally, our plan was not to be able to do it simply because of money. So, they saw it, it worked. And they said, "Well, if it works for science and math, what would happen if we tried it in the English Language Arts classes and the Social Studies classes?" So, we went to Karen Rose, who was principal of Sarasota Middle School at the time, and said, "Karen, could we use Sarasota Middle School as a pilot school, outfit the whole school, and see if we can transform the way teachers teach and students learn in the middle schools?" And she said, "Absolutely." And so, over the summer, that transformation was done. And not only do I hand it to Karen, but I hand it to her teachers, who were willing to completely change the way they had been teaching, whether it was one year or 30 years. So, when that pilot worked, by that time then, I was at the Baransik Foundation, and we decided to take that and do all of the middle schools in Sarasota County. And our partners from Gulf Coast said, "We'll do the southern half if you'll do the northern half." So, that's where we are today, so that every classroom, science, math, English Language Arts, and Social Studies class in our middle schools are completely tech-active, and teachers are teaching in a way that, as you can see, engage students and really get them in control of their own education. And I'd like to thank four of the teachers here today who have been with us, I think most of you since day one, day one. And without their leadership, with the other teachers, with them saying, "This is a good thing for our students," it wouldn't have been as successful. And so, thank you very much. And then also, thank you to the school board. Because without your support, without your financial investment, and your willingness to do this and really invest in our middle schoolers, this would never have happened. Your foresight, your leadership, is much to be appreciated in our school district. So, thank you very, very much.
This celebration actually started at Selby Gardens. And a special thank you to both foundations for hosting our teachers. We had a great time. Thank you very much. On behalf of our students and teachers, I extend a heartfelt thank you to the foundations and each and every stakeholder. This is a perfect example of "It Takes a Village." The foundations have also provided a thorough report on the 21st Century Classroom initiative, and that can be found on our website. And we will provide copies of this to the school board. Thank you, everyone in that village. Thank you.
We are providing one of these to each of you, as well as a Tervis Tumblr that we gave to the teachers at the celebration. We were at Selby Gardens, Michael's on the Bay, one late afternoon, and just wanted to celebrate all the middle school teachers and thank them. So, the Tervis Tumblr, Dr. Bowden, what does the Tervis Tumblr say?
Teaching creates all other professions. Incredible.
Because teaching does create all other professions. So, again, thank you all.
I want to say thank you again to the foundations, to Chuck, to all of the stakeholders in this. This is such a wonderful event, and we thank you all for making this possible. Over the course of the last couple of months, I've been out visiting those schools. We have had visitors in from Alachua County who have been here to see the kinds of things that we are doing so that they can hopefully explore doing some of the same kinds of things. So, I visited Booker Middle, Woodland, and Heron Creek. The interesting thing about that is that when you walk in a room, none of the students notice you're there. I mean, there's 15 of us that were in the room, and nobody paid attention to our being there. They were that engaged with their teacher. And the instruction that's going on is amazing, and our teachers are doing such a great job. But this is the time, this is the grades that we're most concerned about because it's the bridge between elementary and high school. So, I just think these students are going to soar and do great things in the world, and I can't say thank you enough. Also to speak, it just appeared, is next Shirley Brown.
Thank you. I also would like to thank you. Middle school is, I think, key to capturing a middle school. A lot of people think, you know, they drop out in 10th, 11th, or 12th grade. But basically, there's a lot of them that do physically drop out between 8th and 9th grade. We don't know what happened to them. But there are kids who just drop out. They may still show up, but they drop out. You know, they're going through a lot of changes physically and emotionally, you know, and their family, and they're questioning, "Why am I here? Why do I need this? Why?" And if they don't have some answers, because they question everything at that time, if we don't give them something productive to do to help them engage in their future and get excited about it, we may just lose them. And I think that by reaching out to them with this kind of a program, it's going to not only help their middle school years, but it's going to give them a future that many of them might never have had. And I hope, and I know that we're going to see, you know, the benefits of this, you know, far, far, far into the future, because this is such a wonderful program, and it's such a key time in these children's lives. And it's just going to pay benefits over and over and over again. And thank you so much for helping us in this endeavor.
Mrs. Zucker?
Someone began by saying, "If you go back and remember your middle school years." Well, when I go back and remember my middle school years, I shared a seat with someone because there wasn't enough desks in the room, and there was like 35 to 40 kids in it. I can't imagine how much happier I would have been in a school like this. I mean, it's just phenomenal what you all have done. This community is such a fantastic community by all of the partnerships, joining together, and helping us to be the best that we can be. So, I'm anxious to see where we go from here. I know that we will not stop, that there's something else that needs to be conquered. But I thank you very much for giving us the impetus to be able to at least get our middle schools done. Thank you again.
Mr. Robinson?
All right. So, when I think about my middle school, I was the guy in the back of the room daydreaming. But when you go in, like Vice Chair Goodwin was mentioning, kids are engaged. And you don't get to daydream anymore, because the teacher's in the front of that classroom, and she's able to ask questions, and the kids are able to give real-time feedback. And she can find out, do the kids understand the lesson? Should I move on? Or maybe I should go back and research the fundamentals again? So, it's that constant feedback, and it's requiring those kids to not be like Eric Robinson, that they have to pay attention, be alert, and understand what's going on, or the teacher's going to know that there's an issue, and they're going to address that issue immediately. So, I don't know if I would like that or not, but it's certainly different than when I was in middle school. So, thank you guys very much. You guys are literally touching these kids multiple times in just one class, and it's clearly affecting student achievement, and we see it in the schools. And you're the reason why. It's not because anything that the daydreamer Eric Robinson did, it's because of what you guys do every day at the schools, and it touches these kids. And that's why we're in A District, because of the community support that we have through your various foundations. So, thank you.
Dr. Bowden?
I just want to take a moment to thank each and every one of you for the impact that you're having on our students. I think Mark and Teri are perfect examples that leaders in the field of public education do not have to be employees of the school district. You are thought leaders. You are challenging us. You are changing the experience for our teachers and our students on a daily basis, and I want to thank you for that. I have long thought that there should be a way that I, as superintendent, could recognize specific individuals in our community for their service to the district. Our military has a rich history of awarding unit coins. And to those that have served, they know that those unit coins, for some of them, are their most prized possessions. So, I took a point of privilege, and we have minted coins for the school district of Sarasota County. And you will be the first two recipients of these coins. And on the front, it says, "Coin of Excellence, awarded by the superintendent." And on the back, it says, "Every student, every day." So, if you would join me down front, I would like to award you our superintendent's coin.
I just wanted to follow up on something Mr. Robinson said about being in the back of the class. That's something else that they've changed in these classrooms. There is no back of the class anymore. There are no rows of chairs, desks. And oftentimes, the teacher doesn't even have a desk. Surely, it's not at the front of the class. She's walking around amongst the class. So, there is no back of the class. These kids today can't hide in the back and daydream. They're right in the middle of it.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation about student recognition, something that we all love. And I'd like to invite James Slaton, our district athletic director, to the podium for this award.
We've come together to recognize the amazing accomplishments of Booker High's Christian McKay becoming a state champion weightlifter. I'd like to also thank Dr. Bowden and all the school board members for realizing the importance of recognizing amazing athletic accomplishments. So far this school year, Sarasota County schools have won three team state championships and four individual state championships. Athletics provide an opportunity for our young men and women to develop positive characteristics that may not otherwise be developed. Characteristics like hard work, cooperation, teamwork, self-discipline, time management, leadership, community involvement, and improved academics are just a few of the benefits our athletes receive. We like to say that athletics are not life, but they're the tool we use to teach life principles. I'd also like to thank Booker High Principal Dr. Rachel Shelley and the Assistant Principal over Athletics Darby Larkin for all their support and efforts to make Booker High Athletics great. At this time, I would like to introduce Phil Helmuth, the Athletic Director at Booker High, who's going to say a few words.
This really isn't about me, but I just want to say a few words about, well, first of all, thank all of you for recognizing tremendous accomplishment of Christian McKay. It's been amazing to kind of sit in the background and watch the development over the last year. Last year, she was the runner-up in the state class, the next class above where she ended up dropping down to, and the whole process of dropping 26 pounds, I believe, to get in the weight class she's in now, which takes an amazing amount of discipline and all that. So, it's been phenomenal. I'd like to say, Dr. Shelley and Darby Larkin weren't able to be here, but another APA, Mr. Schenk would like to say a few words this time.
All right. Thank you. I know Dr. Shelley and Mrs. Larkin really wanted to be here. Dr. Shelley is out of town at this point, and Mrs. Larkin is traveling to Robinson for basketball right now. Both of our basketball teams are doing fairly well. But this is a great accomplishment for us. We're always college and career readiness. Dr. Shelley's probably said it a million times, and I just want to reiterate that. But also, the importance of athletics and having extracurriculars, that we're so proud of what you've done, Christian.
At this time, I'd like to invite Coach Smithers and Kristen up here, and he's going to say a few words about her.
I'd like to tell you about three things about Christian and a little bit about our journey for the last three years. First of all, she's proven that she's a great student. She has a 4.2 and is dual-enrolled at Booker and SCF. Also, she is a great athlete. She just won the state championship and set a state record about three weeks ago. But she also has a great personality, really bubbly, really friendly, encouraged at every single meet. She encouraged all of her competitors, all of the girls who weren't competing against her. And she just kind of knew everybody and befriended everyone, which is kind of unusual, because sometimes the girls don't talk to each other if they're competing against each other. To kind of prove that she has a great personality, that everybody really likes her, when we were at the district meet in Port Charlotte, they announced that Christian won the district championship in the 183-pound class. And at that time, everyone in the gym stood up and gave her a standing ovation. I've never seen that in all my years of coaching. So, I mean, that is a testament to the kind of person that the other people know, all right? They all loved her. So, that, I mean, that's important to know, those things about her, because she's a great student, great athlete, and she's got a great, great personality. She's going to do really well. The other thing I just wanted to mention, I'll try to be quick with this, was kind of our journey. Our journey took place when she was a sophomore. It was her first year out for weightlifting. And she did well. You could tell she was pretty strong. It was pretty easy to tell. She qualified for the state meet her sophomore year, and we have two events or two lifts that we do in the state meet. Bench press, clean and jerk. You get three attempts at the bench and three attempts at the clean and jerk to get your best lift. And then, the totals are added, the best bench, the best clean and jerker, added together to find out who won, who has the highest total. And so, after the bench, she was second in the state as a sophomore. That's pretty good. But at the clean and jerk, she just had a little bend in the elbow three times, which means she bombed out, which means she doesn't place. So, she's out, which was pretty, you know, that was pretty tough. Then, so we worked out all summer, and she got really strong. So, we're headed into the next district, and before districts, you have to qualify your weight, okay? So, all year, we were talking about not being a 199, but being a 183. So, Christian had three pounds to lose, and she wouldn't lose them. And I was pretty upset for a long time. In fact, after the state meet was over, Christian placed second. And it was a difference of lifting in a weight class a little bit lower, and she would have been first, the state champion. And so, anyway, she placed second, and I didn't talk to her. We didn't lift at all last summer. I didn't talk to her. She didn't talk to me. The first day of practice, she came in and talked to me and said, "I'd like to be on the team, coach." And I said, "All right, let's go." So, you got some weight to lose. Well, she came in at, should I say? Well, I can just tell you what she told me. She said she weighed 196, and she was a lot more than that, but she wouldn't tell me her weight. The year before, she wouldn't lose three pounds. So, now, first day of practice, we start, and we said, "We've got to be serious about this." I mean, we've all tried diets, I'm sure, and they're pretty hard to keep. So, anyway, Christian had to get real serious. And what she did is, she was very, very disciplined, and then became very knowledgeable about what foods do to our body. And probably, in this, all this hassle we had the year before turned out to be, I think, really, really great for this year, because she not only won the state, but she learned how to eat properly. I mean, she really did a great job. She ended up, she was 206 when she told me she was 196. So, she had to get down to 183s, and she did it. And that takes a lot of discipline, right? And then, she taught herself really how to eat properly. And by the time the district came around, she was 183 and kept that weight through the state meet. But we had a real tough time her second year. But all of that, I think, was well worth it, because it worked out really, really great this year. And actually, we both learned quite a bit. But it was, for me, as a coach, it was really, really neat journey to go, to take someone through. Didn't know how it was going to turn out last year, but it turned out really well. So, Christian McKay, right here, state champ.
Coach, I just want to say one thing. You know, I've told all the men in my family, and you need to learn this too, there are two things you never ask a woman.
Yeah.
And one of them is her age, and the And one of them is her age, and the other one is her weight. So, I just thought I'd bring that up to you. But we are so proud of you, Christian, and, you know, you go, girl. But we would like to get a picture of you in front of the podium with the school board members.
Exciting group hug, everyone.
Now, you picked that dress out just for Booker High School today?
No, no.
Your purple.
Okay, so, the first thing I really wanted to say is, it's about the dress. So, when I was in eighth grade, December 22nd, I lost my stepmom. She died of a stroke when she was 27-years-old, and it was probably the hardest time I've ever had. But that is what caused the mental instability that brought me into high school. And high school was so hard when I got in. I had a 2.8 GPA my first quarter. I was slacking so bad, it wasn't even funny. But when I got into weightlifting, the mental strength that I was looking for was from that situation. This dress, I bought the dress and the shoes and the jacket for the funeral, and that's the first and last time I've ever worn it. And I was like, "Okay, well, I want to wear something purple for the thing, so why not wear the dress?" And then, I looked at it in the closet, and I just, like, cried. I cried so much because I was like, "I can't believe I'm actually going to wear this dress." And I feel like... I feel like wearing it right before high school and then wearing it at the end of high school was probably the best decision I made. And it was all... That's where all this came from. And it's like, I have so many people to thank on this whole journey. Like, I broke down the car with Coach the other day because I just realized that it's been three years and he's not my coach anymore. So, yeah, there's that. And then, I have my father to thank, my mother, all my family, really. I have all the support through all the meets. Like, everyone was nice. I don't know if I was nice to them or they were nice to me, but everyone was nice. So, all the support from there, and then, there's just from the school board in general. Like, I've had so many announcements at my school that I honestly can't... Like, I've never had that happen to me before, and I don't know how to come up and, like, you know, like, appreciate that kind of thing because I've never had it before. But I honestly just want to say thank you to, like, everyone. Sorry if I'm talking like a teenage girl with...
So, what are you... So, Christian, what are you going to do with your life?
Oh, yay question. Okay. So, what I'm going to do with my life is finish school. I definitely want to go to Florida Southern, and I want to major in criminology because I want to be a medical examiner. This is making me nervous because I'm going to go sit down now.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You've made us all proud, and that purple dress is beautiful on you. Next up, I'm sorry, are you... Now, I see it. Sorry, sorry, Dr. Bowden. You're next.
So, I'm going to heed Ms. Goodwin's advice, and I'm going to ask you about your weight, but not your body weight. I want to know, what's the number? What did you bench? What's the clean and jerk?
240 for the bench.
Wow.
And then, 190 was my finishing for the clean and jerk, but we were going for 200.
I just want to congratulate you. You will forever be a state champion, and you will think about a date in January of 2018. But those of us who've ever done any coaching know that you didn't win that state championship in January of 2018. You won it in a sweaty gym in the middle of June, right? You won it throughout the year, that it was all of your work that led up to that moment. And so, I want to congratulate you, and that's a title that will be part of you for the rest of your life, state champion. Congratulations.
No, I can't believe it!
It'll also be part of the Booker Nation for years and years to come. Thank you.
Our next presentation, we will hear about a real-life CPR experience from one of our students and a CPR demonstration. I'd like to invite Suzy DeBeau, Supervisor of Health Services, to the podium.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Superintendent, Mr. Hardy. I'm honored to kick off the discussion today on cardiopulmonary resuscitation, mouthful, also known as CPR. We're here today to recognize the importance and the value of CPR to our students, our families, our staff, and even our community family. So, to start, I'd like to introduce you to the Executive Director of Schools at Sarasota Military Academy, SMA, Colonel Christina Bowman, and Master Sergeant Johnny Browning, junior or JROTC instructor. I'd also like to welcome up some members of the student body and their family members, Cadet Brianna Tricarthen, Cadet Devon Tricarthen, Cadet Dylan Tricarthen, and Mom Jackie Tricarthen, also known as the clinic nurse at the prep. They'd like to share some information about training at SMA, and they'd also like to share how this training actually affected one of our student members and their family.
Thank you. Thank you, Suzy. Appreciate that.
Well, good afternoon, and board members, thank you so much. Dr. Bowden, thank you so much for the invitation. When I received the phone call with the invitation and what it was in respect to, absolutely, we would be here. I was told that the district was looking at CPR training for all young men and women in the county school system, and I thank you for that because I'm here to tell you that we can attest that you are the impetus to save lives for years to come. As I was listening to the testaments, that impacting, impacting, that is exactly what you're doing with this decision. At SMA in LET II, which is our 10th-grade JROTC program, all cadets participate in CPR and safety training. So, at this time, I would like to invite Master Sergeant Browning up to speak a little bit about what that program looks like for our cadets.
Good morning, members of the board. Dr. Bowman, Dr. Bowman. In LET II and JROTC, one part of our curriculum, it takes about four weeks of our curriculum throughout the year, we focus on first aid. Health and fitness is a part also, but first aid is the mainstay of what we're here about today. And a big part of that is, we train the cadets at our level, the instructor level, to be able to treat anything from a minor sprain, non-life-threatening injuries, all the way up to performing CPR on a victim or stopping a hemorrhage, fractures, and things of that nature. But we take it a little bit further at SMA. We invite to augment that training for about one week for each class, for each set of students. We invite CPR-certified instructors to come into our classroom, and for one week, they take over and go over everything we did, but at their level. And one week later, all the kids test out, and they end up becoming basic first aid for adults and infants and basic CPR trained for adults and infants. They're then, under the program and the deal we've worked out with the organization, given the opportunity to purchase a two-year certification for a very low price of $15. It's like 60 to 65 on the outside average. And about half of our students take advantage of that because they'll use it for babysitting, lifeguard, jobs for wives, and things of that nature. But at the end, they become basic CPR and first aid certified, and it's just, again, to augment a part of our program that's already in existence, but it helps them out in the long run.
So, with that being said, a few months back, right after school let out and our after-school activities began on campus, we heard a call-out that we had a cadet that was in cardiac, having a cardiac incident. And I ran out, a lot of the administrators ran out, and what we found was a young lady who took it upon herself because of her training and knowing exactly what to do to perform CPR on this cadet. This cadet happened to be her brother. And long story short, after going to the hospital, spending time with the family, we were contacted by the EMTs, and they wanted us to know, without this CPR, without this training, this young man probably would not have survived. So, we are here to attest to your commitment to this community, the young men and women in this community, for years to come. And so, I would like to recognize right now, Cadet Brianna Tricarthen. Come on. Come on, Brianna, come on. Devon Tricarthen. Dylan, and of course, Mom, come on up here. So, Suzy, at this time, would you like to present?
The district would like to award Brianna Tricarthen with the Lifesaver Award for the incidents that arose on that afternoon. She's very humble. I'm not sure if she'd like to say a few words, but we are very proud of her, so...
Thank you so much. I'm very honored for this award. I couldn't have done it without learning all my training in his class or learning about any of the procedures I could have gone. If I hadn't heard about students saying something that happened to my brother, I probably would have never been able to get there in time. And I'm just really honored by everything. Thank you so much.
We're going to have a photo right out here in the center, please.
Thank you again. So, joining me at the podium this afternoon is James Slaton, Athletic Director for the district, also Program Specialist for PE, Hope, and Health. And we'd like to continue this discussion. So, a short time ago, EMS Chief Carson Sanders, who's actually with us today and will be introduced shortly, and Fire Chief Michael Renier approached the district about introducing hands-only CPR as a requisite for high school graduation. With this goal in mind, James and I have been working with district administration, with instructional staff, and community partners to provide the training to high school seniors at our district schools. This requires a commitment from the schools to fit the program into curriculum, as well as organization of volunteers to assist in conducting the classes. To explain a little bit more, hands-only CPR is just that. It's hands-only without mouth-to-mouth breaths, okay? It consists of two steps. One, call 911 or get someone to call. And two, begin providing high-quality chest compressions by pushing hard and fast in the center of the chest with minimal distractions. Those two steps. Hands-only CPR performed by a bystander has been shown to be as effective as conventional CPR, or CPR that includes the breaths, in the first few minutes of an out-of-hospital sudden cardiac arrest. Any staff member can facilitate the training. There's a 30-minute DVD. Students are able to practice on mannequins. We have been generously provided supplies by American Heart for the last eight to 10 years that I've been in the district, working on these programs. And in the end, this method is a research-proven, evidence-based way for students to learn and retain the lifesaving skills of CPR, excuse me. So, I'm going to thank very much two of our seniors from Riverview High that have yet to receive the training. In fact, they got the condensed version today because we thought we might like to give you a little demo of what it is that they work on in the classes. We'll also go over a few photos from the schools we've already visited. But without further ado, Emily Davis, come on up, please, and Mitchell Evans, again, both from Riverview High, would like to take a few minutes to show you there, even though it's condensed, and practice is key, skills in providing CPR. Remember, it's in the first couple of minutes after someone goes down. I'm so sorry. It's important that you get to the victim, if you will, quickly. So, I'm not going to say anything else. I'm going to say, "Man down, somebody's called 911." And thankfully, we have two of our Riverview High School seniors on hand to provide high-quality compressions with minimal interruption. People are screaming. People are upset. People don't know what to do unless they're one of our seniors. Maybe they've already received the training, and they're going to stand by to see how else they can assist. This training supports family members, staff, the community. They show the DVD, and it's one of their peers interviewed right off the bat who says, "I was walking down the sidewalk, and there were a whole bunch of adults standing around, someone down, and they didn't know what to do. The teenager did, the senior did. They had been trained, jumped right in there, and there was a life saved." So, thank you very much, Emily and Mitchell, for that demonstration. And my apologies if you're late for work today. I will write a note. Okay, so, James would like to take a few minutes to talk to you about district efforts, where we are with this training, and share a few pictures. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzy. This great initiative, we've begun at Northport High School. We started on Valentine's Day, and we were able to get all of Northport. And right now, Booker is doing theirs today and tomorrow. So, by the end of the school year, we will have trained over 2,500 Sarasota County seniors in this great lifesaving effort that we want to thank Dr. Bowden and the board for initiating this. So, very appreciative. I think we have a few pictures, maybe? So, the training takes about 45 minutes, and it starts with a video, and they start and stop, and they work through... This was at Northport. And they had a large group at Northport. I think the biggest group was about 80 students, two students on each mannequin. And the feedback was amazing from the schools, actively involved, engaged, zero issues as far as staying focused and working on the task. And I think they really saw that this was a... Something that's going to be a lifelong skill that they can... I think they said the average in Sarasota County of people that know how to do CPR is less than 10%. And I don't like those odds. I'm a sports guy, so I like high percentages. I don't like 10%. So, hopefully, with this initiative, here down the road, those percentages are going to increase dramatically. And we had a lot of folks involved helping with it. And we had a lot of folks involved helping with it. We had a lot of different partners from the community that were actively involved. And this was at Booker High School, in their weight room. They were able to do it. Their classes were a little bit smaller, so we were able to do that in their weight room. And as you see, all the students are very involved in this. It's, like I said, it took about 45 minutes, start to finish. I'd like to recognize and thank the following organizations, because we could not accomplish this valuable, life-saving, community effort without their support. They are Sarasota County Fire, Longboat Key Fire, Northport Fire, Southern Manatee Fire, Sarasota Memorial, Sarasota Emergency Associates, Air Methods, Aromed, City of Sarasota Police, Sarasota County Sheriffs, Northport Police, Northport Auxiliary, Venice Fire and Police. And then with us today, we're representing Sarasota County Fire Department, are EMS Chief Carson Sanders and EMS QI Coordinator Barbara O'Connor. And I've asked Chief Sanders to come speak to us for a little bit.
Thanks for giving me a minute to speak to you. When I approached, Chief Regner and I, when we approached Dr. Bowden about this, the key was to understand how big the picture really is. So I think it's important, from a fire department standpoint, to tell you something a little bit about the stats in Sarasota County. So we run 60,000-plus calls a year on the EMS side. About 45,000 of those get transported to the hospital. It takes five to six minutes by the time someone calls 911, and we're able to arrive on scene to render first aid. And a cardiac arrest, as they said before, and there can be no story that I can tell you that's any better than this one that you just heard, the first three to four minutes is imperative. The quicker that someone is performing bystander CPR, the better chance of survival. And in fact, it doubles or triples if it's in the first two to three minutes. We can't improve on what we do by the time it goes through dispatch and we get there. So there's only one way that we can improve survivability in Sarasota County and the surrounding areas, and that's bystander CPR. Like you said, it went from 10%. We started this initiative two years ago with our Public Safety Communication Center. And what we did is we started giving better, detailed instructions in how to do this hands-only CPR, which was introduced by the American Heart Association five or six years ago. As they proved that it was just as effective as the CPR that we do with breaths, one of the things, especially in an older population, that people were scared of is putting their mouth on someone performing mouth-to-mouth. So with the hands-only CPR, we were able to jump from 12% or 13% of people performing bystander CPR to around 46% last year, 2017. But what we need is more people in the system. And the way to do that, what better way than seniors in high school? We're going to ask, we're going to challenge you as a board to continue to push. We'd like to see it in another grade as well, so that it becomes a habit and these people carry it for life. You're not only raising students, you're teaching people to be good community members. And this is something that they should go back and teach their families. It's something they should teach their brother and sister if they haven't had it. And it's something that we just couldn't be prouder that we were able to partner with the school board. And as you can see by the lists that he put out, I couldn't, there was nobody that said no. We have Aromedical people, we have, Southern Manatee isn't even a Sarasota County Fire Department, and they were all about helping out at Booker today and tomorrow. So the last thing that I want to hit on is, last Thursday, we introduced PulsePoint, which we're going to hand out cards to all of you. PulsePoint is something that downloads through our CAD system when we dispatch, and it's an app for your smartphone. It's connected to our dispatch center, so if you are a trained rescuer, you can download PulsePoint on your smartphone right now. If you are within a quarter mile of a cardiac arrest, when it goes out, it will alert you by a special tone. When it alerts you, it will not only show you where the victim is in a public space, it'll also show you where all the public-accessible AEDs are as well. That way, we match people that know CPR and how to use an AED with those victims that need their help, those patients that need their help, until we can get there. So I encourage you all, we're pushing this as we're out in the schools, we're letting kids know that the PulsePoint exists. It's a free app, there's no cost to it, but we will drive the save rate up in Sarasota County. And like I said, what more do you want in a place like Sarasota, as great of a city as it is, as great of a county as it is, to not drive that up? And just for some context, Tulsa, Oklahoma, introduced this seven years ago. They claim 86.1% of their citizens know hands-only CPR. So it can be done. Thank you very much.
This is great information for all of us, and I think, considering that this is a growing community, I'm saying that gingerly, I think that, you know, behooves us. I worked for the Sarasota YMCA for a long time, and we had the AED training as well as the CPR training, and it served us well. I'm kind of rusty on it now, but I would like to be trained and go forward. I know several people that have narrowly had their lives saved through some of these successes, so this is great information. Thank you for being here today. Any other? Shirley Brown.
Yes, I too want to thank you. And I guess that's just one more of those reasons why the community and the school district wants to keep our kids, when they graduate, in our community, because maybe they'll be saving a life. And, you know, when you're out there talking to people about their referendum again, they go, "Well, why should I care? I don't have any kids in school." Well, they might be needing some of our kids from our schools one day to help them and save their lives. But again, it's great to have this in our schools and expand it into our community. Thank you.
Mrs. Zucker.
Thank you. I've been trained twice, but I don't remember it, so I think I would need retraining. But I was trained with the mouth-to-mouth, and I did not like that. But this other one, I think I could do that. I'm up here playing with my hands, and I think I could do that. Thank you, Susie. I'll be to see you.
Give you some training after a meeting.
Thank you very much.
So for any of you that have had CPR, there's a video online through the American Heart Association. It's heart.org that kind of shows you the hands-only CPR. The other thing is, is our 911 system, if you call now and you set the phone down right next to you if someone's in cardiac arrest, they actually walk you through it and then play the music so that you keep the beat, staying alive. That's one of those ones. But there's multiple songs, but that's something that's very important. I used to tell people, if you took it, a long time ago, they'd say, "Go, call 911." Now they tell you to stay there and put your smartphone down so they can talk to you their way through it.
That's better. Thank you very much.
And then that ends our special presentations. Up next, we have the Superintendent's Report. I know we're going to do an audit presentation. Mitzi Corcoran, our CFO, will be coming forward. Dr. Bowden.
This is the sexy part. Eric's getting excited. We're going to present an audit report. One of the things that we've resolved to do is, as we receive different audit reports, you'll recall in our last board meeting, we discussed our FTE audit. At this point in time, we want to share with you the results of our financial audit to make sure that this feedback that we're receiving from independent third parties is being shared, not only with the board, but as the community as a whole. So at this point in time, I'd like to recognize our Assistant Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to let you know, it was my pleasure to provide each of you with a copy of our comprehensive annual financial report, and you read ahead, and that report is available to anyone who wants to see it, online on our website. And before we get into the presentation, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank my wonderful and dedicated staff, who work so very hard to make sure that our schools and departments are complying with the myriad of laws and regulations that govern school finance. In particular, I'd like to thank, so I'm very happy she's here, Valerie Maggi, our accounting supervisor, or your accounting supervisor. She's responsible for coordinating the entire audit process, and her knowledge and skills allow this process to go as smoothly as it does. So she no sooner completed this particular audit that we're going to discuss today before receiving notification from the Auditor General that they're moving in, and they will be here till December, so it's becoming a year-long process for her, so I thank and count my blessings every day that she's here. So now I'd like to introduce John Gilberto. He is a partner with our independent accounting firm, Cherry Beckett, and he'll be providing you with a review of our audit for this past year.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mitzi. Good afternoon. Thank you for taking time out of your day to, let me present the results of our audit on your financial statements. And as I say that, I want to remind you that this financial statement, this document here, this 200-page document, is yours as the Board, as those charged with governance. We perform a financial audit over that, and I'm going to go over the results of our audit with you today. So we have completed our audit on your June 30, 2017, financial statements, and have dated our audit report December 20, 2017. Your audit doesn't include just the school board, there are other things that are in your audit. There is a blended component unit for the financing corporation, there was no activity in that this year, but there's a footnote disclosure about what that is, and if there was activity, it would show up as a special revenue fund within your financial statement. Also in your financial statement are the discreetly presented component unit for all the charter schools. We don't audit the charter schools, but that column is in there to present that data as it does relate to a necessary component of GAAP, which is the accounting principles you need to follow and disclose. So the standards that we follow are several, and you follow, as I said before, GAAP. That's the accounting standard, the accounting principles that are generally accepted in the United States, that tell your accounting department how to enter and how to account for your cash, your receipts, your disbursements, your debt, your investments, and everything of that effect. And then also how it to put in the footnotes that talk about the measurement of those assets, those liabilities, and inflows and outflows. We follow two forms of GAAP. The first one is the auditing standards that are generally accepted in the United States, and the other one is the governmental auditing standards. Under those standards, we get an understanding of internal controls, and we then design our audit plan around that. And if there are controls in place that we can rely on, we test those controls to make sure they're working. If not, then we do other substantive tests. We also have to follow, for all your federal dollars and your state money, there are requirements under the UGG, the Uniform Grant Guidance, which used to be the OMB Circular A133 at the federal level for your federal grants, and we need to look at internal controls and for compliance, and the compliance with the spending of those grants, and the same at the state level on Chapter 10-800. You had two new GASBIs, that's the Accounting Standards Board, that's the GAAP that you have to follow. They didn't really have any effect on your financial statements, but they do for most governments in the United States. The first one would be the tax abatements. If there are abatements that were given that affected your receipt of tax revenues, it would have been disclosed on what the sources of those abatements for and the uses of those abatements. And then also, GASB 74, which is the OPAP, the Other Post-Employment Benefits, not your pension plan, but the Other in Post-Employment Benefits, if you had a trust plan in place, that would have been adopted, you'd have additional disclosures. Next year, that liability for the unfunded portion of the OPAPs will show up on people's financial statements as a liability and reduce your net position, just like the pension did a couple of years ago. Good news is, there was no change in the plan scope of our audit. From what we understood, what we planned, and what we did in our preliminary work, through the audit process, nothing rose to the level that we had to change the scope of our audit, and that's good news. And that says a lot about what your accounting department does to get ready for the audit, to make sure that we're informed of all changes that take place, or audit plans in place and can be followed. There were no disagreements with management during the course of the audit. Everybody was very, very good about getting us the information. As you know, as auditors, in God we trust everybody else, we look at documentation, and they provided all the documentation we needed to be able to issue the opinion that we issue. In your financial statements, there are not just the hard facts, those debits, those credits, supporting invoices and receipts, there are estimates that are made and have to be followed and have to be audited. The big one is the pension liability. That is done by actuaries and is done by the state level, and it rolls into your financial statements as an over $200 million liability that hits your financial statements. There are also the useful lives on all your depreciation, to make sure that you're appreciating that asset cost over the useful life of that asset. And there are the post-employment benefits, there's an incurred but not reported, an estimate of what that liability is at any point in time that needs to be booked for all the costs that are out there that you may not know about, but you have incurred. During our audit, we, from the trial balance, we made one recommended audit entry that was made by management. It was an inter-fund transfer that washed out in the consolidation, but it grossed up a revenue and a, I mean, asset and a liability, and we netted those back down by recommending that inter-fund transaction being net out. There are no uncorrected journal entries or adjustments made this year. That was the only entry we recommended, and it was made by management. And there were no consultation with other auditors, with the exception that all the component units during your financial statement are audited by other auditors, and we refer to them in our work, we don't rely on their work. We have received written confirmation from management, saying that everything they told us, everything they gave us, was complete and accurate during the course of our audit. We have received, we have issued a management letter that is required by the state of Florida, and there, there was a no-comment letter. And we have also issued a report on your compliance with the local government investment policies. It's an examination report that is required by the state, and you were in compliance with the local investment policies and how you invest your funds. With that, we have issued an unmodified opinion, which is a highest-level assurance, is a clean audit, on your financial statements. There is other things in your financial statements that are supplemental to the financial statements, not just your assets and liabilities. There's combining schedules in the back for your funds and your special revenue funds and your debt service funds and your capital project funds. Those are in relation to, and not specifically opined on by your auditor, but they, what we do is we test the data there and make sure it rolls up into the financial statements, and it is audited that way. There are two sections in this financial statement that is not audited by us, and we take no responsibility for. That is the introductory section, that's where your pretty pictures are, and it's also the statistical section, which has 10 years of data and a lot of other demographic information that is very useful for you as you look back and want to make judgments and decisions. The results of your single audit, again, here, we issued an unmodified opinion on the compliance. We had no issues that rose to the level that had to be reported or qualify the opinion on the programs we audited. The programs we audited were twofold. We audited the Title I grant, and we also audited the Student Financial Assistance Grant. Those are both cluster grants, and it got us coverage. You are a low-risk auditee, that's a good thing. That means there were no past material weaknesses or significant deficiencies or a question cost that were material that would have made you a higher-risk audit, and a lot more testing would have been done, a lot more programs would have had have been pulled under the Other communication, as I said, with the adoption of the accounting standards and the new policies that came into place, management is very active, very proactive at looking at those things and making sure they've reached out to us in the past, before the audit starts, to make sure that any of these effects of these new GASBIs, these accounting standards, have been taken in place and thought of through by them, to make sure they're in place when we get there. As it relates to fraud and illegal acts, we talked to a lot of people. We're not required to audit for fraud, but we do inquire about fraud. Nothing was raised or brought to our attention that, again, changed our audit plan. And lastly, Cherry Beckett, myself, and my team is independent, not only in appearance, but in fact, in relation to your audit. With that, my contact information is on the last page. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, but usually it's when I walk out is when you think of a question, and you feel free to contact us at any time. I thank you for letting me be the auditor the last two years, and look, wish you good luck with the Auditor General this year. You don't need it, they're a lot of fun. Any questions?
Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, I just had a statement, and I just have a slight disagreement with Mitzi. She didn't thank Mitzi. She thanked everybody else but her. And when you see people talking about no-comment management letter, when you hear things like clean opinion, and, you know, an organization our size is going to have some things that the auditor is going to want to change, he's got to justify his salary. But the fact that it was changed, first of all, that he said that it had no effect because it was asset liability, and they washed itself out and consolidated return, and the fact that they cooperated and fixed it is just a testament to our CFO. And so thank you, Mitzi, for all the hard work you did, making sure that we get a clean audit. And I know it drives everybody crazy that she's so tight with everything and that she wants to follow the rules, but she gets a bad rap, but she's doing her job, and she does it well. So my only problem with Mitzi was she forgot she didn't thank everybody, so I'm going to take it upon myself to say thank you, Mitzi, for everything you did.
All right, we'll take it.
Any other questions or comments? Well, I want to thank the whole accounting department, the finance department, Mitzi especially, and everyone that was involved with this audit. Thank you very much. Dr. Bowden.
That concludes the Superintendent's Report. Thank you, ma'am.
And next, we have a hearing of citizens. And before we have that, I just would like to make a quick comment. Our Board Chair, Bridget Ziegler, is in Tallahassee with a meeting today about safety and security with the governor. Dr. Bowden, how can people make comments to us? Could you go over that process a little bit again?
Yes, we have set up a special email address. Yes, we have set up a special email address that we're receiving comments from the public. We are also organizing a public forum for next week. We've not decided on the format, whether it's a phone-in, a Facebook Live, or a live face-to-face, but we'll also have some sort of forum next week to interact directly with us. That email address is schoolsafetyfeedback@sarasotacountyschools.net. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Next, we have our hearing of citizens. I have five cards. I'll call your name, and each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and you will speak to us, not to the audience. When the timer flashes yellow, one minute remains, and you need to begin to summarize. You may, you must stop speaking when the buzzer strikes three minutes. And the first person I'm calling up will be Jeff Buck.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the great work you folks do. I really appreciate it. I think we're lucky to have you. I did want to talk to you today, and thank you, Dr. Bowden, about your email you sent out and the feedback for the teachers. You guys have a tough job. Everybody's looking to you for answers, like you can solve this issue. And the reality is, is there's some things you can do, and we can do this right away, okay? One of the things you can do is you can empower your teachers, your staff, and your students with training on how to handle this. And I'm not just talking about running and ducking and covering. I'm talking about confronting people that come to you. My son comes home, and he's eight years old. He came to me, and he's like, "Dad, what am I supposed to do?" And I'm like, "Well, get out of the way, run, hide, do what you can." But if you're that close to somebody who's doing something like that, you gotta take action, okay? And nobody wants to hear their little kid taking action, but I taught my wife, I taught my son, how to disarm somebody. I think your teachers need to know how to disarm somebody. The NRA offers instruction, and I know the county has some other tools available, but you want to project strength, not weakness. Weakness is hiding under your desk. Weakness is being afraid. Strength is projected through confidence, okay? I talk to the teachers at my son's school, and a lot of times they'll go, "I don't know what to do. I'm not really sure. I don't have any training." And it's scary, and nobody likes to have to deal with it, but there's a world that we want to live in, and there's a world that we live in. And the reality is, these things happen very rare. They're very rare. There's like 330 million people in this United States. It's very rare that's going to happen, but an NRA training class, if you got 10% to 15% to 20% of your teachers and staff trained where they felt confident and something like this happened, they could go and grab a gun away from a perpetrator. A lot of times, yes, you can do it. I did. I walked into an armed robbery one time, and I was like, "Whoa, what do I do?" You know what I did? I talked my way out of it. I talked the whole thing out of it because I was trained on how to handle it. Maybe you're not comfortable doing it, but other people are. And I know from training women in the past on self-defense and how to take care of themselves, you have to empower somebody. If you have 20% of your teachers walking around feeling confident that they can handle the situation, then maybe somebody will think twice before messing with our students. That's the only solution. There's not more fences, there's not more armed security. There's only so much you can do. The reality is, is that your staff, they're there, they're right there, they know, they identify, and if they're trained, and you can train them right away, you can start this right away. And imagine, you know, 5,000 teachers have gone through your training program, the kids get trained on how to read, maybe the teachers should be trained on how to defend themselves. And that's right, that's the world we live in. If somebody comes up, you gotta do it. I just, I don't teach my son to duck and hide. I teach my son that if there's an armed perpetrator and you're nearby and you can do something, that you gotta do something, even if at your own expense. And that's just the bottom line. Thank you so much. You can do something. You have the power, and we can get this done right away. Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you. My name is Sue Maloney. I'm a retired teacher. I've been here in Sarasota for 12 years now. I'm the chairperson of the Education Committee of the Sarasota Chapter of the Brady Campaign to Prevent Gun Violence. That's a nationwide organization that advocates for sensible gun control. In 2017, the Brady Campaign became partners with an educational foundation called Sandy Hook Promise. All of us remember what happened in Sandy Hook, December 14, 2012. A mass shooting occurred, 20 children and six educators were killed. The parents of those students who were killed formed an educational foundation called Sandy Hook Promise. This foundation offers, free of charge, always good words for schools, and to any school district in America, a program that helps students and teachers create a more compassionate and inclusive environment so that students won't feel more isolated, more marginalized as they progress through the school system. The Sandy Hook Promise program also encourages students to say something to any authority if they suspect that a student may be a threat to themselves or to their schools, their community. As I noted in a letter to the Herald Tribune that was published last Tuesday, a week ago, the students in the Sarasota and Manatee schools, they've already done a really great job in notifying authorities. On seven different occasions, they reported specific threats, but all of us can do more if we learn to recognize even more subtle signals. As the local spokesperson for the Sandy Hook program, I've already started to contact the Sarasota County District Schools with information. Last Wednesday morning, I visited the school district office, and I left a folder of information with Sonia Figueroa-Alberts, who is the Director of the People's Support Services. I've since spoken twice to Paul Sutton, who is the chairperson of the Safe and Drug-Free Schools Advisory Committee, that also needs to give approval for programs that are going to be used, and an application from Sandy Hook Promise will be on their agenda for the March meeting. The Miami-Dade School District has been using this program since 2015. That's three years now. Pinellas and Hillsborough Counties will be starting to use it next school year. I contacted the Manatee County School District Office last week also, and they plan to meet soon with the Florida State rep from Sandy Hook. I look forward to this program being used in our schools. This is my county. We all know we have the highly-rated school district. This program can only make it better and hopefully safer, too. Thank you.
Next, we have Angela Nguyen.
Hi there. My name is Angela Nguyen, and I'm speaking on behalf of my daughter, Colleen Nguyen, who is being physically assaulted and verbally attacked on a county-issued after-school bus. Colleen is one of the kindest, sweetest children I've ever met, and that opinion is coming from everyone who has ever met her, not just me, her mother, who is obviously biased. Her heart is so big, and she loves to love everyone and everything. Colleen goes to Wilkinson and takes the after-school bus to Girls, Inc. This bus also picks up children from Phillipi and goes to the Boys and Girls Club as well. On this bus, Colleen is being slapped, hit, scratched, and pushed. Things are being taken out of her backpack, water is being poured on her and her things. If she speaks out, she's being verbally threatened, that moratroses will befall her if she says anything. One girl in particular is affecting the brunt of this abuse. She attends Wilkinson and goes to the Boys and Girls Club. When Colleen would tell the bus driver, he would tell the girl to go sit in the back, which she rarely would listen to. This began before winter break. Back then, I spoke with her teacher and with Girls, Inc. Her teacher only asked the girl's name, but didn't know how to handle the situation. Girls, Inc. began to make notes. After break, the girl in question was only on the bus very intermittently. Jessica Burdick, who you also hear from today, started the ball rolling at the beginning of this month with an email to both principals and people in the Department of Transportation after an incident with her child, Juliana, that left her child in hysterics. I then followed up with my own email. I had to call the Wilkinson principal numerous times to elicit a response, and said response was less than helpful. We got an email stating that a representative from the Boys and Girls Club rode the bus once, and someone did one single investigation. Girls, Inc. went above and beyond by personally speaking with the bus driver and having numerous in-person and telephone conversations with me, with the other mother, and with Colleen's dad. No other follow-up was done. I had to call numerous times to speak to a representative from the Transportation Department. Also, no follow-up was done. Over a week after the first email, Colleen again got hit numerous times, this time in the head, by the girl who was supposed to be sitting in the back of the bus but was right behind her. Meanwhile, my child is relegated to just the front seat behind the bus driver while the other children can have their roam of the bus at their free will, which is not only unfair, but teaching my children that her voice does not matter. I sent another email and was informed that the girl was kicked off the bus, which was untrue. Finally, I wrote another email that included everyone on the school board, as well as people from the Transportation Department and the Boys and Girls Club. This is unacceptable. There seems to be absolutely no clearly defined standards for handling bullying issues. The lines of communication between everyone involved is severely lacking. In this day and age where bullying is supposed to be zero tolerance, to the point where our nation is paying for commercials to address this, and the, obviously, school-wide violence is rampant in our country. Why is this not getting more attention? Why is this not being taken seriously? My child is five years old, five, and she is terrified to ride the bus to a program that she loves and adores. Nobody has been helpful in this situation until now I was finally offered to speak today. So I really urge everyone to do something about this, please.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Jessica Burdick. I'm the other mother Angela was speaking of. My daughter's Juliana. She attends Phillipi, and she rides the same bus to Girls, Inc. And, you know, imagine you're five years old. You're so excited about going to school. She's super smart. She loves to learn. She's active. Girls, Inc. teaches these girls to be strong, smart, and bold, and yet she comes home crying, asking me, "Mommy, am I ugly? Is my hair gross?" You know, this girl, these people are on the bus, hitting them, scratching them in the face, taking things out of her backpack, throwing it across the bus, and as she goes to picks it up, it's water poured on her. Like, they're five years old. This is insane. And as a parent, you feel helpless. There's nothing I can do. I want to get on that bus, and I want to yell at that bus driver. That's not going to help. The people that are supposed to be speaking to the bus driver and following some sort of protocol, which I don't know what the protocol is, but, you know, they want proof and documentation so that we can go to the next step, but documentation comes from the bus driver. What's he doing? Go to the back of the bus. What should he be doing? Writing referral every time. I mean, how many times does it take for our children to be slapped, hit, punched, scratched? For this girl to be suspended or removed? I mean, what is the protocol here? My challenge to you is, I mean, no tolerance for bullies. What does that mean? It's being tolerated. She's still on the bus. My challenge is to find that protocol, let the parents know, and remove this child or any child. And if she's in the back of the bus, my child's in the front, there's other children in the back of that bus, I guarantee you, she's moving her aggression onto them. It's unfair, and like I said, as a parent, we feel helpless. We have nothing, we can't do anything for our five-year-olds who are telling, "Use your voice, stand up, be strong." You know, we're there to protect them. This is school property, and miscommunication between Girls, Inc., and my principal and her principal, because there's all these different, you know, people involved. It's just nothing's getting done, and we feel helpless.
Dr. Bowden, is there somebody here who can address their concerns?
Is there another parent speaking on this subject? If we could conclude the comments, and then I'll respond and introduce Mr. Renoff.
The last speaker is Marvin Nguyen.
Hi, yes, I am Colleen's father. My daughter is five years old. She's in kindergarten. She weighs all of 42 pounds right now. The aggressor, the bully in this situation, is a much bigger, much older girl. It is not an isolated incident, excuse me. This is repeat behavior across multiple children, not just my child, Jessica's child. This girl is an aggressor and is repeatedly doing this, and if she has moved to the back of the bus, she could continue, like she says, with another girl. The issue here, the crux of the matter, is the bus driver is not reporting the incidents, is not following, creating a paper trail. I don't know if there's any video camera evidence of these incidents, but there's nothing that we as parents can do other than, you know, hear from our children and go to the adults that we trust to care for our children, to keep them safe. There's been a failure to keep our children safe, not only by the transportation officials, but by the school officials. The principal of Wilkinson Elementary School, as my, as Colleen's mother has said, has lied to us and told us that this girl's been kicked off the bus. That is not the case, all right? This bully needs to be removed from the bus. We've seen the violence that occurs in schools around us. We know how bad it can be. This is not simple name-calling or teasing. This is assault. If we have to open an assault case with the Sheriff's Department to get results, I don't know what else to do. We're coming here to besiege you, to entreat you, to handle this situation, to reprimand the bus driver, the principal of the elementary school, and to remove this girl from the bus.